Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular City of White Lakes Council Meeting, Monday, March 8th, 2020, 6:30. Roll call, please.
Mayor Rieland.
Here.
Councillors Zins.
Here.
Up.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Kramer.
Here.
Motion, everybody's present. Consent agenda, please.
To approve the following items from the consent agenda. Item number three. Approval of city council minutes from February 9th, February 22nd, and March 1st of 2021. Items seven. Correspondence. MPCA Palmstown Petroleum Tank Release Site File Closure Letter, dated February 24th of 2021. The Rams Board Meeting Minutes of January 28th, 2021. White Lakes Public Library Meeting Minutes of January 19th, 2021. And the DNR Final Special Harvest Report, 2020. And then item 10. Claims payroll and receipts.
Everybody okay with the consent agenda tonight?
Yeah.
If so, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion by councillor Zins, support.
I'll support it.
Support by councillor Peterson, roll call.
Councillors Zins.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Mayor Rieland.
Yes, motion carries. Guest Citizens Forum, is anybody want to, anything to talk to any in the audience? Harry?
No, I want to see what happened with the letter that you guys got from Jerry Whitsett. I think Jerry is on, he wants to talk.
All right, Jerry, would you like to talk?
Yeah, I was just curious what you've decided on that letter.
Well, we voted on it twice, and I don't think the council has voted to take care of this. I've had some, I've done a lot of research on this, I've looked in it a lot. This is for the council to, this is a unique situation. Most towns, most houses in town are single dwellings. And the Kobe Ridge, not going to put blame on anybody, but for some reason, they, the way they designed it, it's different. There's one shut off on the street, and there's two up by the houses. I think we need to change our ordinance to reflect that situation. I also talked to the contractor, and he was not sure if the leak was from when we dug it or from, or not. He could not tell me that answer, so. I do think this is a unique situation. I feel, you know, we're partially responsible for it, and I'm going to look for some council input here, but I think if we could split the cost on this, since we did dig it once, and we had precedents in the past. What's everybody else think?
I think I'd be open to sharing a part of the cost. I know I had some concerns that they were really upset, you know, that they were told that the city would cover it. And so I would like to see us help out a little bit with that, if we could.
Any other counsel?
I guess as long as it's not going to be to set precedence for any other problems that could crop up out there. That, you know, since this is something that we did at one time dig in that area. You know, they need to understand that our liability ends at the curb stop, so. I'd like to interject if I can.
Go ahead, Harry.
I've been in construction for many years, many years. And if we broke something on the job site, we didn't charge the business for it or the homeowner if it was our fault. And those shut offs next to the house are about a foot apart. So when your excavator operator grabbed that stand pipe and broke that one plastic fitting off, there's another plastic fitting about a foot away. And it just makes sense that they should have repaired that other one right away. And if they cracked it, it took a while for it to leak. But after the water surfaced going into Kobe Lake, it was a year and a half before we could get anybody to even look at it. And one of your council, one of your workers at the water plant or someplace said they didn't have a big enough machine to dig it up on that side hill, they were going to have to get another contractor to come in there anyway. But I just, that's all I want to say, is that it just wasn't fixed properly when you put it back together.
Jerry, anything you'd like to say?
I agree with Harry said. I mean, this happened way before I even came here. And everybody that we talked to says that the city was going to take care of it because they dug there before. And that's what I'm going as, and it's also considered a shut off. And what I read on your bio is from, you're responsible to the shut offs. Well, that's a shut off.
But there's also a shut off by the road, and that's because all of our shut offs are supposed to be in the easement, so we're not going on private property. That's why the first shut offs are put there. My recommendation to the council, and if the council supports it or not, is going to be to split the bill. And that would be $3,795 for the city and $3,795 for the Kobe Ridge. But I also want a letter signed by the association that any more breaks up by the houses are not the city's responsibility.
It's because that part there is plastic still.
That's my recommendation. It's, in my mind, it's a compromise. And I'm wondering if the council thinks.
See that? We're all covered now.
Yeah, man, I think in that letter, there needs to be clarification. It seems like there's some misunderstanding on where the shut offs, the homeowners are thinking the shut offs that are right by their houses counts as a shut off. The shut off that we're responsible to is the one out by the street. And that definitely needs to be included in that letter that they would sign off on.
Okay, I agree with you, Dan. Are we going to get some, Harry and Gerald, what do you think? Does that sound like a fair compromise?
I can't answer, I can't answer for Jerry or Lynn. But I still, like I said before, nobody knew that your employees were even going to dig until they walk. They drove onto the side hill there and put the shovel in the ground and put the bucket in the ground and pulled that stand pipe up. And with the unique situation like it is, with the valves that are only a foot apart, and when he found out that there were these cheap plastic fittings down there. I guess I don't, if I were having to fit some of that bill, I wouldn't like it. That's all I've got to say.
And I agree, I agree with that because they should have fixed it when it broke the first time. When there was two, they knew there was another plastic one in there, they should have replaced it instead of just covering it back up.
They're all plastic out there. Every one of them.
But they're not supposed to, they shouldn't be.
The city did not install all those lines.
But when they dug the one up, and they found it was a plastic, and it was broke, they changed it. They should have changed the other one at the same time because it's the same stuff. You know, and who's, like Harry said, who's saying that they didn't catch that one to break it too? And it just cracked, and finally it just broke all the way. Well, I. They're going to fix what they broke.
I've come up with a compromise to split the bill. Harry, do you think the association would sign the letter stating that the city is no longer responsible for the shut offs by the buildings after this? And we'd only be responsible to the shut off in the street easement?
I really can't answer that, we'd have to have it at our meeting, the next meeting. It can be brought up.
Why don't you bring it up at that meeting, and we will table this? Because I'm not willing to pay any of the bill if we can't get that in writing myself, so. I think it's a good compromise. I think there's been a lot of stuff said that shouldn't have been said. And I think it's partially our fault, but I don't think it's all our fault. And what's the rest of the council think?
Chris, just being new to the issue, who installed the plastic fittings? The elder?
There was a contractor that got that property to begin with, and they installed all the water lines. City had nothing to do with it.
Okay.
And some of the, the one water line had busted. We did go in and repair it eight years ago, and the other one started leaking about a year and a half ago. And they're stating that we must have broken it while we were in there. Well, it didn't leak for six and a half years.
Oh, you're wrong there, Chris. It was a year and a half, it was a year and a half that the water flowed into Kobe Lake. When Winger dug that ground out there, he had to dig out three or four dump trucks full of mud.
Yep.
So that water had stayed in there for a long time before the year and a half that it, that it was coming out of the ground. So how long, I don't know, but it wasn't a year and a half.
Okay. Councillor Zins, are you going to the next Kobe Ridge meeting?
I will, yes.
Is there a date set on that, Harry?
I can't answer that, I don't know. Maybe Jerry knows, but I don't know.
No, I don't. I don't know either.
Name in the audience? Harry?
No, I want to see what happened with the letter that you guys got from Jerry Whitsett. And I think Jerry is on, he wants to talk.
All right, Jerry, would you like to talk?
Yeah, I was just curious what you saw decided on that letter.
Well, we voted on it twice and and I don't think the council has has voted to take care of this. I've had some, I've done a lot of research on this. I've looked in a lot. This is for the council to, um, this is a unique situation. Most town, most houses in town are single dwellings. Um, and and the Kobe Ridge, not going to put blame on anybody, but for some reason they, the way they designed it, it's 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 different. There's one shut off on the street and there's two up by the houses. Um, I think we need to change our ordinance to reflect that situation. Um, I also talked to the contractor and he he was not sure if the leak was from when we dug it or from or 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 not. He could not tell me that answer, so. Um, I do think this is a unique situation. I I feel, you know, we're partially responsible for it and 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 I'm I'm gonna look for some counsel input here, but I think if we could split the cost on this, um, since we did dig it once and and we had precedents in the past. What's everybody else think?
I think I'd be um open to uh sharing a part of the cost. I know I had some concerns that they were really upset, you know, that they were told that the city would cover it. And so I I would like to see us um help out a little bit with that if we could.
Any other counsel?
I guess as long as it's not going to be to set precedence for any other problems that could crop up out there that, um, you know, since this is something that we did at one time dig in that area. You know, they need to understand that our liability ends at the curb stop, so.
I'd like to uh interject if I could.
Go ahead, Harry.
I've been in construction for many years, many years. And if we broke something on the job site, we didn't charge the business for it or the homeowner if it was our fault. And those shut offs next to the house are about a foot apart. So when your excavator operator grabbed that stand pipe and broke that one plastic fitting off, there's another plastic fitting about a foot away. And it just makes sense that they should have repaired that other one right away. And if they cracked it, it took a while for it to leak. But after the water surfaced going into Kobe Lake, it was a year and a half before we could get anybody to even look at it. And one of your counsel, one of your workers at the at the water plant or someplace said they didn't have a big enough machine to dig it up on that side hill. They were gonna have to get another contractor to come in there anyway. But I just, that's all I want to say is that uh it just wasn't fixed properly when you put it back together.
Jerry, anything you'd like to say?
I agree with Harry said. I mean, this happened way before I even came here. And everybody that we talked to says that they were gonna, the city was gonna take care of it because they dug there before. And that's what I'm going as. And then it's also considered a shut off. And what I read on your biologist from you're responsible to the shut offs. Well, that's a shut off.
But there's also a shut off by the road and that's that's because all of our shut offs are supposed to be in the easement, so we're not going on private property. That's why the first shut offs are put there. My recommendation to the council, and if the council supports it or not, is gonna be to split the bill. Um, and that would be thirty seven ninety five, three thousand seven hundred ninety five dollars for the city and three thousand seven hundred ninety five dollars for the Kobe Ridge. But I also want a letter signed by the association that anymore breaks up by the houses are not the city's responsibility.
And and if
Because that part there is plastic still.
That's my recommendation. Uh, it's it, in my mind, it's a it's a compromise. Um, and I'm wondering
See that.
We're all covered now.
Yeah, man, I think in that letter, there needs to be clarification. It seems like there's some misunderstanding on on where the shut offs there. Homeowners are thinking the shut offs that are right by their houses counts as a shut off. The shut off that that we're responsible to is the one out by the street. And that that need definitely needs to be included in that letter that they would sign off on.
Okay, I agree with you, Dan. Are we gonna get some, Harry and uh and Gerald, Gerald, what do you, what do you think? Does that sound like a fair compromise?
I can't answer. I can't answer for Jerry or Lynn, but uh I I still, like I said before, uh nobody knew that your employees were even going to dig until they walk, they drove onto the the side hill there and put the shovel in the ground and put the bucket in the ground and pull that stand pipe up. And with the unique situation like it is with the valves that are only a foot apart. And when he found out that there were these cheap plastic fittings down there, I I guess I don't, if 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 I were having to fit some of that bill, I wouldn't like it. That's all I got to say.
Gerald?
And I I agree, I agree with that because they should have fixed it when it broke the first time. When there was two, they knew there was another plastic one in there, they should have replaced it. Instead of just covering it back up.
They're all plastic out there. Every one
But they're not supposed they shouldn't be.
Not install all those lines.
But when they dug the one up and they found it was a plastic and it was broke, they changed it. They should have changed the other one at the same time because it's the same stuff. You know, and who's, like Harry said, who's saying that they didn't catch that one to break it too? And it just cracked and finally it just broke all the way.
Well, I I
And a fix that they broke.
I've come up with a compromise to split the bill. Harry, do you think the association would sign the letter stating that the city is no longer responsible for the shut offs by the buildings after this? And we'd only, and we'd only be responsible to the shut off in the street easement?
I really can't answer that. We'd have to have at our meeting. The next meeting it can be brought up.
Why don't you bring it up at that meeting and uh we will table this. Uh, cause I'm not willing to pay any of the bill if we can't get that in writing myself, so. Uh, I think it's a good compromise. I think there's been a lot of stuff said that shouldn't have been said. And I think it's partially our fault, but I don't think it's all our fault. And uh, what's rest of the council think?
Chris, just being new to the issue, um, who installed the plastic fittings that
There was a contractor that that got that property to begin with, and they installed all the water lines. City had nothing to do with it.
Okay.
And uh, some of the the one water line had busted. We did go in and repair it eight years ago. And uh, the other one started leaking about a year and a half ago, and they're stating that we must have broken it while we were in there. Well, it didn't leak for six and a half years.
Oh, you're wrong there, Chris.
Yeah.
It was a year and a half. It was a year and a half that the water flowed into Kobe Lake. When when Winger dug that ground out there, he had to dig out three or four dump trucks full of mud.
Yep.
So that water had stayed in there for a long time before the year and a half that it well, that it was coming out of the ground. So how long? I don't know. But it wasn't a year and a half.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Zins, are you going to the next Kobe Ridge meeting?
I will, yes.
Is there a date set on that, Harry?
I I can't answer that. I don't know. Maybe Jerry knows, but I don't know.
No, I don't. I don't know either.
You don't have a meeting coming up?
I don't know if there is one or not. I don't know. They haven't said nothing.
Okay.
We can, we, uh, I can get ahold of them tomorrow and we can maybe set an emergency meeting up.
Okay. Counsel
Kenny, were you part of that at all?
Uh, no, Dave, that uh line was dug when Wesley was still working here. Uh, Wesley's been retired now for six years, so it was prior to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Well, I think what we do now, if the council's okay with this, is we'll we'll make, wait for that meeting to see if we can get some language. Uh, Mitch, maybe you can get involved and look at our ordinance. Like I said, Mitch, it's kind of a funny situation. It's the only area in town that has a shut off at the street and shut offs by the buildings.
Right.
Yeah, and there is a, there actually is a water service line maintenance policy that the city had promulgated uh a while back. I'll I'll take a look at that and I'll talk to Councilor Zins about it. I don't know if he was aware of that or not, but we can look at that language.
Perfect, thank you. So Harry, if you'd set up a meeting and and Counselor Zins, and who else goes to that meeting? Dan, do you?
Dan.
You guys are going to that meeting and we see we can get it worked out.
I'll find out tomorrow if we can get something going on.
Okay, all right. Anything else on this issue right now? If not, moving on. Report staff, Recreation Golf Superintendent Wade West.
Um, everything good at T arena? We got through the men's snow check tournament this weekend, a regional coming up in two weeks, and then the ice melt shortly after that, so. Uh, pretty much end of the season stuff going on right now. And golf course isn't open yet.
Making a bold predictions with this weather, April fifteenth, they'll be out there golfing or?
My standard predict is always May fifteenth, because I know we'll be golfing by then. Other than that, that's it.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Um, Kenny, anything tonight?
No, mostly agenda items. I just want to let residents uh be aware, we're not out of the blue yet as far as uh frozen water lines go. So if you've historically had any trouble with your water service line in the past, please keep a uh pencil stream of water going. We have had a few uh freeze ups in town.
Okay. Uh, City Attorney Mitch, you got anything other than the agenda issues, Mitch?
Uh, Mayor and Council, no, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Um, reports from City Council, uh, Councilor Zins.
Um, just got a couple of things. Uh, Mitch, is there a possibility you giving me a call tomorrow on a couple of planning and zoning issues?
Yes, yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, appreciate it. And then uh, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pop?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Counselor Peterson?
I do have a few things here. Um, I attended the chamber meeting last week and they've got a couple of things. They donated one thousand dollars to youth baseball and softball. Um, they put in a water carnival request to the COVID team to see what would be allowed. Um, you know, seeing if they can work something out, maybe not have as as many people, but just what what would be okay. Um, the citywide homage sale will be May fifteenth, so mark your calendars. And the Easter parade will be Saturday, April third at ten o'clock. Um, a few other things then too. Um, there's still spring signups going on for youth sports. So anyone wanting to sign up, um, go to Misabi East Recreation or Mark Gert, and he can help you out with that. Also with Misabi's youth hockey, as Wade stated, the Bantamay Regions Tournament is March nineteenth through the twenty first, and they still need volunteers to help out. They need announcing, books, uh, penalty boxes, goal judges. Anyone interested in, um, can sign, anyone interested that wants to sign up can contact me at two nine zero one five seven nine and I'll get you set up. And that's everything for me.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Debbie?
Nothing.
Okay. I got a couple of things. Tammy, have we heard from Benchmark on those lead slots that were surveyed last fall? And we got any, or or anything final on that yet at all?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, I got a call from a couple of the of the homeowners on the front. They're wondering where we were at with that, so. Um, the other issue I have is uh, we have that food giveaway. Debbie, I got a couple of your emails today. Um, it, the time got changed till one, right? I don't know if you saw that, Deb?
I saw it. I didn't request that. I think it got actually changed to one fifteen. And I think they just did that arbitrarily. I didn't request that. I just forwarded the email to you that I asked the question about like, how do they handle, you know, the people coming early and the backup and all of that stuff? And they just said that they, what they do is um, you know, they let people line up early and just kind of watch to make sure there isn't like, you know, a traffic hazard, but they don't start until fifteen minutes before. And then I saw today um, AOA posted that they changed a bunch, like all of the times that day for their deliveries. So I think White Lakes is slated to start at one fifteen.
Yeah, and the bus they're saying twelve forty five, uh, but last time it came a half hour early, telling the volunteers to be down around one o'clock.
Yeah, okay.
Kenny, you know, Kenny and I talked about about getting some barricades. The other discussion I talked to Chief Suler today about it is we let them in the parking lot right away or do we barricade it off and not allow them to park on the highway? Um, and then Tammy got another email from them today that we were thinking we'd only give one or two boxes per car. And if they needed more, they could get back in line. Well, AOA is not recommending that. They said their policy is, how many families, those are the boxes you should give out. Was that correct, Tammy?
Yes.
So, you know, we're gonna set up two lines this time and and just see how it goes. So Kenny, I I told Tim, you and him and I'll meet Wednesday just to decide how we're gonna handle that. So if we're gonna allow them in the parking lot early or or what's gonna be the thing, so.
Sounds good. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, are you? I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask, did they say if they're going to be able to provide more boxes this time or they don't know?
They have not said. I did request two hundred, but I do not know. I I think whatever we're gonna get, we're gonna get, so.
Yeah, okay.
And then Dan, are you gonna be be there on Thursday?
Actually, I got a doctor's appointment at one o'clock, so I will not be there.
Okay, all right. I think we got enough people, so.
I know Wesley across the street, he couldn't make the last one, but he said that he would definitely be willing to help out, so.
Okay.
He's aware of the time.
Okay.
And I won't be there this Thursday. I always, the second Thursday of the month, I have a work meeting that I have to attend, but I can come to the next one.
All right.
I can always come to the second, the fourth Thursday of the month.
Okay, I don't know how long they're gonna, I mean, we're gonna do this after March or not. I I'm not sure yet, so.
Right, okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, everybody. Uh, we'll move on to old business to approve the updated City of White Lakes Personnel Committee policy. Anybody have any questions on that? I I think it just really spells out better. Um, anytime there's grievances or or leave of absences or anything, so. I I think Tammy, when we approve this, I think this should get probably posted. You know, posted with all the departments, so everybody understands it, so.
Fairly question with that, with the, with us moving towards the city administrator, was that all taken into consideration or would there possibly be some changes once we establish the city administrator?
I agree with you, Dan. I think that's something the city administrator and we can look at, because there's a couple that I agree with you, probably the city administrator could handle instead of coming to the or something. I do agree with you on that.
Okay, so.
The the la, the language was updated, the language was updated to include the reference to city administrator, but as far as the actual role that the Personnel Committee plays and all that might change when you do hire a city administrator, I agree that might be kind of a structure or an organizational thing that you may want to look at down the road.
Mitch, do you think we could approve this one for tonight?
Oh, sure, yep. And then if if the new city administrator, when you get a new city administrator on board, you, you know, can consult with that person and maybe put together some, you know, a new concept maybe on how the city administrator will function uh, in conjunction with a Personnel Committee. And that can be something that can be looked at when the new city administrator comes on board.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions? Not hearing any? Could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Pop, is there support?
I'll support.
Or by Counselor Peterson, roll call.
Counselors, Zins?
Yes.
Up?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes. Kramer? Yes. Mayor Reland?
Yes, motion carries. Item B, to approve the quote of Becker Arena products dated March ninth twenty twenty in the amount of seven thousand eight oh three forty six for carpet in arena locker room number five, budgeted item. Wait?
Yeah, that's just the, that'll be the last locker room we have to do.
Okay.
Out of the six. So it's the last one, and they kept, they kept the, we put that off last year with COVID, not knowing where money would go or how money would go, and we just, they kept the same quote from last year to this year. That's why it's dated twenty twenty.
Okay. Council have any questions? Uh, motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Zin, support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Pop, roll call.
Counselors, Zins?
Yes.
Up?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes. Kramer? Yes. Mayor Reland?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to new business. Item A, to approve the advertising for part-time seasonal positions from approximately May first through September thirtieth with a deadline for applications on Friday, April second at four P M. And all this, these, if if there's a list is in front of you, all the supervisors have put on their, what they're looking for, so. Any discussion by council? Deb, this is something we do every year. We try to get out early so the high school kids can can have their jobs lined up before they're out of school, so.
Sure, makes sense. Um, is there any indication like of how many in each category? Or that's just pre?
The supervisors usually come up with a list and they'll talk to the liaison and and I know Kenny usually hires five or so, couple for the baseball, one utility and and Wade's usually looking for a couple mowers at the golf course, so.
Just based on what their need is?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's all budgeted, it's all in their budgets under part-time, part-time labor.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
By Counselor Peterson, support?
I'll support.
Or by Counselor Kramer, roll call?
Counselors, Zins?
Yes.
Up?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes. Kramer? Yes. Mayor Reland?
Yes, motion carries. Item B, to approve contract for application for payment number seven dated February twenty fifth, twenty twenty, with an amount of one hundred and sixty thousand three eighty three to gritter construction for the waste, for the White Lakes wastewater treatment facility improvement project. Brian, I see you're on, any comments?
Uh, good evening. No, just real quick, uh, February was a bit of a slow month because of the the cold snap we had there. They were, they were shut down for a few weeks, so. They did get a little bit of pipe in the ground and actually most of this pay request was delivery of materials. There were some valves and structural metals that came to the site, so the bulk of it is actually just material cost, but um, so far at least, it looks like we may have uh some great weather this spring and and things will get rolling again. Um, there's no uh schedule concerns by the contractor, even though it was a slow month, they expect that winter's gonna have its ups and downs, so uh, really no issues to speak of. Um, but if there's any questions, I'll be happy to take them, so.
Questions or discussion for Brian? Not hearing any, uh, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Zin, support?
I'll support it.
Support by Counselor Kramer. Roll call.
Counselors, Zins?
Yes.
Up?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes. Kramer? Yes. Mayor Reland?
Yes, motion carries. Item C, Personnel Committee update regarding city administrator clerk treasurer position. I see Mitch is on the Department of Labor has come up with an agreement with Becky Lamy to be our next city administrator. Becky, you're on. Thank you for coming on. And uh, Mitch, I know you and Becky are are working on the contract.
Yeah, correct. I do have a draft contract that was uh emailed to me late last week. I did have a chance to look through it today. Looks pretty much in order. There are just a few minor language things that just have to be tweaked a little bit. But I think otherwise it's pretty much ready to go. Uh, so I'll probably be able to do the final uh revisions on it in the next day or two and then it should be ready for. And of course, Becky's gonna wanna review that, do a final review of it, and then we'd have it ready for approval, so however you wanna time that. Um, and you could, and you could, I mean, yeah, I don't know if you, I I don't know if you, what your thoughts were tonight, if you I wanna have the council make a vote on uh, you know, making an official offer and then, you know, we would just memorialize it in a settlement agree or a in a employment agreement that we're working on now. You wanna finalize something or if you wanna just um, do a recessed meeting where we could then take this up in the next few days to get a final agreement approved, however you wanna, you know, proceed in that regard.
I would like to approve it tonight. Um, there's only really two changes to Becky Burridge's contract. The benefit package is exactly the same. Um, vacation, sick leave, cell phone use, all of that, none of that has changed. Uh, the the two main ones are are salary. Uh, Dave and I agreed to ninety five thousand a year with two percent the second and two percent the third year and three weeks vacation. So those are the only two real differences. Other than that, the contract will read exactly like Becky's, so. I think we, I I would like to move forward on this and have the council give give uh myself and and Mitch authority to to sign that contract.
Yeah, so what you can do on that, Mayor, just as far as making a record of it tonight, you can go ahead and and approve uh proceeding with the hiring under those, uh, that salary and benefit package and then subject to the final agreement being approved by my office as far as language, you know, just as far as the actual language goes. And then you're authorized, uh, you and the deputy clerk could be authorized to then execute it. Um, you know, once it's been officially, uh, you know, basically finalized by my office, then you would be authorized to approve it. So you can do that tonight. You can pass that motion subject to final approval of the the actual agreement by by my office.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions by any council? Not hearing any? Would I, I I'd like a motion to approve the hiring of Becky Lamy as the city administrator clerk treasurer?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Zins, is there support?
I'll support.
Or by Counselor Pop, roll call, please.
Counselors, Zins?
Yes.
Up?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes. Kramer? No. Mayor Reland?
Yes, motion carries. Welcome aboard, Becky. Anything to say tonight?
Not particularly anything, thank you, though.
Thank you very much. Um, moving on to new business, item D, to accept the resignation letter from Scott Garrett from the EMS Department effective March second, twenty twenty one. A motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, support?
I'll support that.
Or by Counselor Zins, roll call?
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Up?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes. Kramer? Yes. Mayor Reland?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, I'll be, if nothing else, any Yes, motion carries. Uh, I'll be, if nothing else, anybody has for tonight, adjournments in order? Motion? Motion by Council Pop, support?
I'll support.
Or by Council Kramer, roll call?
Councilor Zins.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland.
Yes, motion carries. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Night.